Welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, July 24th, 2023, 6:01 PM. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation, which arrives for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes from 7:10 to 23 were received and in corrections, comments, it was stand and submitted. Presentations. Approved confirmation of Officer Chris Gosvina-Gosian, dang, I chewed it up.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner.
Good evening.
So tonight, I have an officer that has successfully completed their one-year probationary period with the Helena Police Department. At the end of that probationary period and under Montana state law, the appointment of the officer must be submitted to the City Commission. And if the appointment is confirmed by the City Commission, then the officer becomes a member of our police force. With this said, I'm seeking a vote from the Commission to confirm this officer tonight. Prior to having the Commission vote on this officer's confirmation, and if I may, like to introduce Officer Gosvina, right, I'm saying it correct? And introduce him and give him a brief background on where he came from and where he came to Helena from. If that's okay.
Yes, sure.
Okay. So tonight, again, Officer Chris Gosvina, he started his career as a police officer in 2018 with the Porterville Police Department in California. He chose this path not because it was easy, but because he knew it would provide a stable life for his wife, Olivia, and their children. Additionally, it would, it would bring pride and honor to his family and himself. During his career as an officer, it has not always been easy. With the support of his wife and family, he has been able to succeed. Officer Chris Gosvina chose Helena PD because he noticed their strong camaraderie from initial interviews. He is grateful to have been brought on as part of the team and to not only make Helena PD his career, but also his purpose. With that, if you wouldn't mind, I would like to welcome Chris Gosvina to the HPD family and if you have a few minutes to where he could talk to the Commission and introduce himself.
Please.
And any guests that you may have in attendance. I saw a bunch of little kids back there, so.
First off, I want to say thank you, Mayor and Chief and the Commission for letting me talk and I'll thank my family as well for coming. I do have my wife, she's back there, Olivia, she's holding my daughter Laney, my two younger daughters, Lyndon and Pearson, I have my in-laws here as well, Alex and Andy and their kids, Cruz and Valen, I got the whole crew here. I was told this is my time to plea for you guys, because he's a boat. I got a fourth one coming on the way, Connelly, I'm a family of girls, so.
That's all right.
I wanna, I wanna be here, I wanna work here for my girls, work for the family, work for Porterville PD, sorry, Helena PD, you got me thinking about it. But this is why I came here, I came here for my family. This is where I wanna work, this is where I wanna be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, with that, sorry, sir, go ahead.
Go ahead.
With that, I would like to seek approval from the Commission for Officer Gosvina's confirmation.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioners. Any comments, questions?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'll just start off, congratulations and welcome to Helena. I'm very excited that you've chosen to make Helena your home and it's a great place for girls, so excited to have a few more to the awesome girls' club that we have here in Helena. And congratulations, we're grateful that you're choosing to be a public servant here and excited to see your career thrive.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Congratulations and welcome to Helena, we're glad to have you, your family. I spent some time briefly in Bakersfield, California, so I don't blame you for wanting to be here. It's, yeah, I do not, so welcome to Helena and congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Officer Gosvina, thank you for coming to Helena and being willing, willing to serve here and wish you the best of luck in your career. Thank you.
Thank you, not much more to add other than congratulations and welcome. And could we get a correct pronunciation of your name for the record, please, because now I'm really curious.
So Gosvina.
Gosvina, cool, thank you, welcome.
Welcome, Officer Gosvina. We appreciate you and thanks for bringing your family, we also welcome your family. And those girls will be in the force also, so don't worry about it. They'll take care, they will handle themselves, so.
They're gonna be tough, that's for sure.
Well, welcome, and we will now.
Mr. Mayor, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the confirmation of Officer Chris Gosvina.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the Commission? If not, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Board Appointments, ADA Compliance Committee, City, County, Regional Airport Authority. I am recommending the following Board Appointments. ADA Compliance Committee, Appointment of Jacob Krasovic to an interim term on the ADA Compliance Board as a Disabled Citizen Representative. Interim term will expire September 1st, 2024. I'm also recommending City, County, Regional Airport Authority, Appointment of Jason Davis to, to an interim term on the City, County, Regional Airport Authority as a joint appointee. Interim term will expire September 1st, 2024. Commissioners? Comments, questions?
Mr.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the following Board Appointments. ADA Compliance Committee, the Appointment of Jakim Kristofich to an interim term on the ADA Compliance Board and disabled, as a Disabled Citizen Representative. Interim term will expire September 1st, 2024. And the City, excuse me, City, County, Regional Airport Authority, Appointment of Jason Davis to an interim term on the City, County, Regional Airport Authority as a joint appointee. Interim term will expire on September 1st, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and final discussion. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Communications proposals from the Commissioners, let's see you. Moving along, Reporter of the City Attorney.
Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Reporter of the City Manager.
Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to invite Director McManup to just brief the Commission on the status of the SSD Dispatch Union Negotiations.
You bet. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Happy to report to you that we have a fully executed contract with the SSD Dispatch Local 7790. I just want to say a couple words about this. In January, the management received notice to open our contract negotiations. In June, June 29th, we reached a tentative agreement for all the sections. From the local president, she wrote to me, thanks to the openness and collaboration of all parties involved, the union members were involved, were involved with negotiations throughout the entirety of the process and provided a majority verbal vote June 27th and a majority final vote on June 29th. On July 18th, retroactively to July 1, the fully executed contract was complete, so that will be effective July 1. Just to say a few words about this contract negotiation. Commissioner Logan might remember, within my first week, maybe two, he came to my office and he wanted to express to me his interest in interest-based bargaining for the union contracts at, at the city. And I read about it, I studied up on it, and I will tell you, the contract negotiations for the SSD Dispatch was textbook, textbook, interest-based bargaining. The dispatchers and the management were interested really in one thing and one thing only, and that was to best serve our citizens and our community. They've had some challenges with staffing issues, so we talked a lot about how to best serve our, our community in the county and the city, given those staffing shortages, and we were completely collaborative, open, honest. And I will say that the management side, especially the two program managers in the dispatch center, have rapport and trust with those dispatchers, and that made a huge difference in these negotiations. There was a lot of cleanup, there was redundancy, some old language that we cleaned up, but there were some things that we did, we were able to accomplish. One is, we had an MOU in place for on-call with all the short staff issues, so we were able to negotiate that into the contract. They added a mental health program incentive, which was, I think, important for the work that they do. They had a discussion on bidding for holidays, because they wanted that to be fair, they have very few who are senior, they have one or two senior dispatchers, and most of them are new, so in order to give them equal access to some of the holidays. Compensation, we created a small increment wage increase for years beyond five years of service, they used to be capped at five years, five years of service, so now we have some small incentives for people who stay longer. The total impact of that negotiated item, including benefits, was a little over $11,000, so we felt like that was fair. So I just wanted to also say, we renewed this contract for July 1, 23 through June 30, 25, so it's a two-year contract. Typically, these contracts are three years, but intentionally, we spaced this one for two years, because currently, we're in police negotiations. We think we'll renew that one for three years. Next year is FIRE, so we'll probably renew that one for three years, and then the year after, this one will come due, and we'll, we'll hopefully negotiate that contract for three, so they'll all stagger, so every year, we'll have a contract to negotiate. We're also currently negotiating records, and that typically renews in three years, and we anticipate that'll probably be the same. Let's see, with that, if you have any questions, I will honor any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director McMan. Comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, just one really briefly, I was not aware about that we were utilizing interest-based bargaining, but I'm really excited that we are, because I know it has been a game changer for a lot of, well, negotiations all over the state between management and their union, so really excited to see us maybe start utilizing that more for the common good of the whole organization.
Yeah, thank you.
And thanks all to the hard work you put into this, we appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just want to say thanks to management staff and to the local for successfully bargaining this contract, and, and I know interest-based bargaining is a lot of work, but in the long run, it, it actually works out to be a much quicker process often, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You over, that?
Mayor Collins, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Communications from Helena Citizens Council?
Member has been doing a good job. There we go. And so, we strongly recommend that term limits not be established for advisory boards. An example is the Montana Legislature, where we no longer have our John Cobbs or Francis Bardanos, who had, were, had the respect of the entire body and could really help governance proceed. So thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I will readjust our agenda, because we have some guests online that I want to go straight to Zipley. We will put up the Public Hearing B on right now, so I'll turn it over to Attorney Doctor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Becky Doctor, City Attorney. I'm here for the item to discuss the executing an agreement with the Zipley Fiber Corporation. It's, they're a telecommunications franchise, they're a telecommunications company that's looking to do a franchise in Helena to construct and operate fiber optic lines within Helena for its citizens. Bob Dushin should be online and can speak to this. He's a, he's with River Oaks Communications Corporation and has been working with the city to negotiate the, the agreement itself and has been working with both of us, the, both the, I'm sorry, both the company and the city, and he can speak to and answer any questions about this, if I could turn it over to him, Mayor.
Please.
Was that directed to me? I just came off mute, please.
Bob, it was, thank you.
You bet. So, good evening, members of the Commission and Mayor. I'm Bob Dushin, Vice President of River Oaks Communications Corporation. We've been closely working with the city and Zipley for a number of months on negotiating a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise. Zipley desires to provide telecommunications and information services, internet services in the city. In order to accomplish this, we negotiated a franchise which protects both the rights of the city and enables Zipley to conduct its business operations, to reach out to businesses and residents with its services. Zipley is looking to provide competitive services, and I will defer to Jessica to speak on Zipley's behalf in that regard. And I would also be glad to address any questions that the Mayor or Commission have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners? Do you have any comments, questions for Mr. Bob? Okay, so, I see Manager Burton, you're also on this, you have any comments you want to make on behalf, okay, are there any public comments? No public comments, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve the Zipley Fiber Telecommunications franchise to allow Zipley Fiber to construct fiber optic lines within the city right of way.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, consent agenda, claims. Claims paid on 5/24/23, check number 194278 through 194395, and three ACH checks for a total of $696,607.84. Claims paid on 5/30/23, 5/31/23, and 6/23, checks number 193194396 through 19448, and three ACH payments for $619,970.40. Claims paid on 6/6, 6/7, 6/8, 6/9, checks number 194481 through 194583, with four payments for $474.19.55. Claims paid on 6/13/23, 6/15/23, checks number 194584 through 194760, one payment for $556,995. Claims paid on 6/21/23, 6/22/23, 6/23/23, checks number 194791 through 194864, four payments for $591,814.07, for a grand total of $2,940,169.87. Discussion. Do you, do you have any explanation before we move forward?
You did a great job, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Comments or questions from the Commission? I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the claims paid from May 24th, 2023 through June 23rd, 2023, check numbers 194278 through 194864, and 15 ACH payments for a grand total of
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider Resolution Distributing Railroad Urban Renewal District Tax Increment Financing Fund to Larson Building LLC for Accessible Parking and Egress Improvements. Manager Burton, okay, Planner Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Sorry, City Manager Burton, I didn't mean to steal your thunder. As was mentioned, tonight, you're being asked to consider two requests for Railroad TIF increment financing dollars. The first of which is from Larson Building LLC. In late May, we received an application from John Iverson, the owner of the Larson Building, which is Catty Corner from the Railroad Depot, if you're familiar with that area along Helena Avenue. John is looking to make $250,000 worth of improvements to his property, but the request for eligible aspects of his proposal totals $70,533, his request is for, sorry, 50% of that, so that is $35,266. And with that, he'll be installing dedicated ADA compliant parking on the southeast corner of the property, and at that same area, he's going to be making improvements that are ADA compliant for the entrances. The application went to the Railroad TIF Advisory Board meeting on the 15th of June and was unanimously recommended for approval at the 50% funding request of $35,266.50. So with that, the recommendation before you tonight is to move to approve distributing Railroad Urban Renewal District Tax Increment Financing Funds to Larson Building LLC for accessible parking and ingress improvements. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, also, John Iverson is available as well.
Thank you. Comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question and a quick comment. Do we know, we've had a number of requests from the Railroad TIF, do you know what the remaining dollar amount is in that fund currently?
I will defer to Director Danielson, but I want to say it's in the region of about $450,000, but it might be well in excess of that. It's approximately correct.
Okay, great, and thank you, appreciate that. I'm really excited about the requests we've been getting from this district in particular, all of them have the theme of, I think, pedestrian connectivity and revitalizing the area, which is the whole purpose of this TIF fund, TIF district, so very excited for that and glad that the applicant brought this project.
If not, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, any public comments, sir?
Mayor, City Commissioners, John Iverson, representing Larson Building. We're pretty excited to be part of the redevelopment at the Sixth Ward. We think this TIF is doing exactly what it's supposed to be doing, and there's a lot of exciting things happening down there, if you haven't been down there recently. The Larson Building, we have six going on seven nonprofits that call that building home. We have another 10 or so small businesses that operate out of that building as well, and 10 residential residents on the second floor that also call it home, some of which have lived there for over 25 years. And so, we, we've come in and, and we've been there for 11 years now, and we're trying to do everything we can to take this 1903 building up to standards, to make it more accessible and more usable to the types of businesses and tenants that, that, that represent the diversity of Helena, and so we sure appreciate you taking a look at this. I will be back, I think, again, we have additional improvements we hope to make as money becomes available, but this is, this is the bite of the apple we're taking right now, so, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Thank you, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution distributing Railroad Urban Renewal District Tax Increment Financing Funds to the Larson Building LLC for the accessible parking and ingress improvements. Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider Resolution Distributing Railroad Urban Renewal District Tax Increment Financing Fund to Charles Albert Properties LLC to install sidewalks, ADA ramps, and landscaping at the Houston Center. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. So this is the second of the two proposals for you tonight for the Railroad Urban Renewal District. As you mentioned, this is for Charles Albert Properties LLC. We received an application in early June from Ed Beal, who's the representative of the Limited Liability Partnership. His application is for $13,077, and what he's looking to do is install, well, I should say, replace sidewalks, install ADA ramps, and install some new landscaping in the vicinity of Capital Sports and the Houston Center. This is going to deal with the replacement of about 156 linear feet of sidewalks, which is no small amount, along with the drive approaches into the shopping center, which have kind of fallen into disrepair over the years, and again, he's also going to be installing some landscaping along the edges of the property. The total cost for this effort is $26,154, so his request is 50% of that total amount. And again, at the June 15th Advisory Board meeting, they did unanimously recommend funding approval for this request. So with that, the recommended motion before you tonight is move to approve a resolution distributing Railroad Urban Renewal District Tax Increment Financing Funds to Charles Albert Properties LLC to install sidewalks, ADA ramps, and landscaping at the Houston Center. If you have questions of me about this proposal, I'm happy to answer them. Also, Ed Beal is present this evening.
Thank you, Planner Ray. Comments from the Commission?
Mr. Rick, can I just ask one brief question? Sorry.
No.
I know that MDT, when they did the sidewalk replacement along the entire stretch, did they do any of the other ADA improvements around this area, or is there any way that MDT could be of maybe more support to the property owners since they have made so many improvements?
Mayor and Commissioner, I will actually defer to Director Knopki, but I think the improvements you're referring to are further along, about two blocks length away on Montana Avenue. on Montana Avenue, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. I wasn't sure if it was across from U-Haul or not, but...
I'm getting a nod from Director Knopki.
Yes. Okay, great. Thank you.
Do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name's Ed Beal. I represent Charles Albert Properties. Charles is Joseph Charles Nissler. He's my partner in the business, and my name's Edward Albert Beal, Charles Albert. So our building was built in 1956. It's not quite as grand as Mr. Iverson's. I was three years premature, so I wasn't here until three years after that. We appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation to you, and I think basically it does a fair bit to enhance the connectivity, walkability, and it does, right across the street at U-Haul, as you requested, that did get improved. I don't know if it's MDT or what, but one of these corners that we're going to ADA will go right across to that directly, and I think that's like 183 yards west of Malfunction Junction, so it gives a little more walkability. And then on the other side, it's Helena Avenue and National, which if you go Catty Corner over to the Capital City Health Club, that's also ADA'd. Yeah. Stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comments, Madam Clerk? Would you check online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I move to approve a resolution distributing Railroad Urban Renewal District Tax Increment Financing Funds to Charles Albert Properties LLP to install sidewalks, ADA ramps, and landscaping at the Houston Center.
Second?
Has been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider a sidewalk variance request for 3424 Highway 12 East. Manager Burton, oh, Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As you stated, this is a sidewalk request, variance request for 3424 Highway 12 East. It's one of Dick Anderson's properties. They're requesting curbside sidewalk with this variance request because in the adjacent, right adjacent to the property line, there are some utility conflicts that would result. So there's also properties to the west that are also currently have curbside sidewalks, so this will fit with the existing conditions. The reason for this variance is the City Code 742A requires sidewalks to be placed one foot from the property line. So this is the reason for the request of curbside. So we move to approve or recommend approval of the sidewalk placement variance to allow curbside placement along Centennial Drive, frontage of Lot 2, Block 6 of the Inter-City Commercial Subdivision Number 1. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a sidewalk placement variance to allow curbside placement along the Centennial Drive frontage of Lot 2, Block 6 of the Inter-City Commercial Subdivision Number 1.
Second. Has been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intentions to set fees charged by the Helena Transportation Systems Department and set a public hearing date, hearing for August 7, 2023. Oh, okay.
What's happening, Mayor? Thanks, Mayor. So Mayor and Commissioners, tonight we have a resolution of intention for you for the fees for the Transportation Systems Department. If you remember, a few weeks ago, on June 21, we came to you in an admin meeting, presented our fees. So tonight, we are re-presenting those for sort of a first pass on them. We have, I worked with the Attorney's Office to come up with a resolution that sort of gave us a blanket opportunity to consolidate all of our department's fees into one place. And so you'll see that it includes everything that is considered a fee, so that would exclude our street maintenance assessment, things like that, and any other fee that would be allowed by either state law, city code, or federal statutes. There are a couple of updated items in the packet for you. As we discussed at the meeting, one of them would be our sign replacements. So you'll see those were changed to the actual cost. We had sort of an average number in there before, so now it'll just happen that if we have to do a sign replacement from an accident or something like that, we'll do them at whatever the actual cost comes out to be. The other things that we don't, I'm sorry, one other thing that's included on the parking side are the pay-to-park rates. That schedule is a little complicated to put into a table, so I did attach the flyer for you that kind of explains our pay-to-park fees. The things that you'll notice maybe are not changed from our meeting, one would be the capital transit rates. And I know that we had discussed providing you a table, but as I started to put that table together, it got a little convoluted. So I thought it would be easier just to give you a simple explanation as to the effect. So we talked about 50 cent increments and what that would do to the revenue at those different increments. And so ultimately, our expected annual ridership for capital transit is around 50,000 rides a year. So every 50%, or sorry, every 50 cent increment would essentially equate to a gross revenue of about $25,000. When you take into account some of the discounts that we offer for buying multiple ride passes and things like that, and then you take into account the transaction fees that we have with our online service, it really comes out to be about, my estimate's around $15,000 in net revenue for every 50 cent increment that we will either go up or go down from the suggested rate. So I hope that makes it easy math for you to discuss and have a decision for on that. The other one you'll notice that's not changed is the parklet fee. So the, I guess the guidance that was sort of given to us was ultimately do give our best option of what we thought was the most affordable for the city to provide. And in talking with city manager and Director Knopki, that really was our best option as far as the lost revenue that it doesn't let us generate by offering that service. And so obviously, all of these rates are up for Commission's approval, disapproval, discussion. And so we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Cooy. A question on the parklet fee. I note that a monthly parking fee or permit, if I'm reading correctly, is $60 a month. So if you have a parklet that's three spaces, that would be 60 times three per month, which over the season would still be less than 2,500. So can you help me understand the calculation for the parklet fee and why it's not tied to the same as the monthly fee for a space?
Sure. So Mayor and Commissioner Reed, the difference between those monthly permits and where the parklets exist is that those permits are more for the actual parking lots and parking garages, and the parklets exist in the pay-to-park, which is a constant turnover area. So if you have a permit, you have a designated one space in that particular lot, and we have so many permits that we could sell.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just a quick follow-up. So just to help me understand again, what calculation did we use to come up with the 2,500? I know you mentioned it at the admin meeting, but can you remind me what our basis was for coming up with that number?
I'll let Director Knopki answer that one.
Calling a friend.
Phone a friend. Mayor and Commissioners, so in the beginning, we looked at these fees, and really what makes these fees go up or down is, as in your example, is some of these areas of the parklet supply are in angled parking, which takes up a larger square footage and more parking spaces. So in your example, if we did five, the cost comes out to about $2,200. So in this, we used our current pay-to-park rates. We used, the parking study that set those uses 85% of those spaces will be occupied at any one time. So we reduced it by 85 cents. And then when we looked at the, that's what gave us our original numbers. So when we went back and looked at trying to, as the economic drivers and other benefits that we are seeing by these parklets, there wasn't a specific rhyme or reason why we came out to 2,500, but when we did our research of what other communities are doing per space or for the parklet, we fell right into the, about average with that 2,500 number. That's why we chose that number instead of trying to tie it directly back to the cost per space.
So may I ask a question, Director Knopki? So if you were to tie it back directly to, would it be more or less?
If we tied it directly back, it would be more for the angled parking spaces.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, just on that point, I think it would be supportive of where we got to this. I understand that it is a significant amount for a lot of businesses that are trying to pursue the parklet, and there is a lot of investment that has to go into developing the infrastructure. But I also know that we have to cover our costs to maintain parking and turning that over. But what I'd be interested in is if we can maybe have status updates as to where we think, and working with those who do have the parklet permits, if it's working or not working, if other communities are finding that it is prohibitive too, just so that we can keep tabs on if we're able to drop the price, great, but I also understand that we are in a situation that we have to bring in revenue to cover the costs of a department and the expenses that come along with running a parking division. So if we could just maybe keep tabs on where we are in six months or a year, reevaluate, maybe before the next summer, actually reevaluate what this looks like and if we can make any adjustments.
Mayor and Commissioners, we'd be happy to give you updates. One of the options that we were considering is expanding the timeframe, knowing that our winters don't start and stop when it says it's winter and it's springtime. Sometimes we have an early spring or a late fall that allows some extra time. So it would just, there's already the requirement in the, for the parklets to be able to be basically taken down within a 24-hour period. So we could look at expanding those timeframes to make it, allow those parklets up for a longer period of time. Being, because they are so close to the travel lanes, though, we wouldn't be able to probably go through the winter. We might try that as a pilot program, but with the snow being plowed up against them, there might be some issues there.
Thank you.
Longer season, I think, would be great.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a question, just a comment. I really appreciate the work that went into this, and I appreciate your explanation. I did, however, we received an email from a business owner who described the costs associated with the parklet. And while I understand the lost revenue for parking, I think the amount of money expended by businesses for the permitting and the fees and everything else, they are contributing revenue to the city in other ways that are not just parking. So I can't support the $2,500 fee. I think it is important that we show our businesses that their investment is, you know, well-received by the city and has a lot of benefit. And I do think, again, I have heard anecdotally a number of businesses that wanted to do this and cannot due to the cost, not just of the parking, but of the whole package. So I think for this season, I appreciate we brought it down. I think that's great, but I would really, it would be my strong preference going forward that we either tie it to monthly parking costs or, I mean, ideally waive it altogether because I really think the benefit to our city is much higher than the lost revenue for parking. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Do we have any public comments?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I'm Jordan Conley. I'm the Operations Director for Downtown Helena. I'm here to speak on behalf of the businesses, but also I am here because part of my job is to promote the vibrancy and vitality of the entire downtown area. I also appreciate that the fees have gone down significantly and the work that has gone into this. However, I do want to note that the benefits of parklets, as Commissioner Reed has noted, are numerous and very well documented. There are a range of strategies that communities are taking here, from paying businesses to erect parklets to charging the fees. So there might be an average here, but there are lots of options available to us based on what comparative communities are doing. I want to note that they promote the pedestrianization of downtown, so they encourage people to walk. They promote the beautification of downtown, and that's often on behalf of the business owners. So the businesses are the ones paying to erect these structures, maintain them, put flowers on them, all of that. And that's something that's making the downtown look more cared for and beautiful. They have an economic impact on both the businesses to which they are attached as well as surrounding businesses. Plus, they have the effect of making downtown look as busy as it is, right? So if you're driving through downtown and you see people sitting outside, you realize how busy and vibrant downtown is. Whereas if you're driving through and all of those people are inside, you're not necessarily seeing it. And as you know, people are attracted to other people. And since we have such a short outdoor season here, it's really beneficial to have those people sitting outside of the businesses and attracting more visitors and people. I will note that they are also very expensive to put up, to store, to maintain, year after year, and that by being a temporary structure that goes up and then comes down, they're actually helping preserve those parking spots through the winter. Whereas a business that maybe puts up a permanent structure would be fully eliminating some parking spots, right? And so we should think about the benefit that they're adding by being a temporary structure. And then finally, I would just note that the current parking system was arrived at so that parking would better serve the community. And I think we should really keep that mission in mind, right? Does having parklets really take away from, you know, the need for this, these parking spots? I understand the financial aspect of it, but I agree with Commissioner Reed and the businesses downtown do as well that this adds a lot economically, socially, in terms of the beautification of downtown, and those factors should be considered as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
I'm Sarah Hamblock with The Western and The Gold Bar. And I'd like to start by saying that we really appreciate that the City of Helena has been promoting the parklet program and that the City of Helena allowed us to build a parklet on the south side of our building on Lawrence Avenue. It's been attracting tourists all summer and just gives folks another outlet, somewhere to sit outside It's been attracting tourists all summer and just gives folks another outlet, somewhere to sit outside in our beautiful downtown. I wanted to give a few more details regarding the investment of a parklet for our downtown. When we originally were interested in building the parklet, we thought it would be a smaller scale, something that could be more handmade out of pallets with, you know, cute benches. And then as we got through the process, looking at all the specifications, we realized it would have to be a much more sturdy structure. And between the architecture costs, the fabrication, it came out to be about forty-six thousand dollars for a structure that we only can use for six months, maybe. And we're very happy that we got to make that investment for downtown. I think it does add a lot of value. Ongoing fees for our parklet, every year we're expecting about four thousand dollars between flowers, maintenance, parking fees at their current level. So I am speaking tonight to request that the fee either be lowered or that it, rather than, it did seem arbitrary at the beginning after that explanation, it does make more sense. However, our parklet takes up one spot, Blackfoot River Brewing Company takes up four spots, and we're being charged the same amount. So if we could come up with an equitable fee for both of us and we can pay the same, that's fine. But I did want to note that based on David Knopki's equation, the parking fee for our one spot that our parklet takes up would be about fifteen hundred dollars for the whole season. And instead, we're paying twenty-five hundred for that spot. And it is just like not affordable for the investment that we've made for downtown. Yeah, thank you for letting me speak. Appreciate it.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Oh, yes.
Did you say one spot?
Yes.
One parking spot?
One parking spot.
For the Gold Bar?
Mm-hmm, so we are on parallel parking. And because we're on a corner, there's like four feet that were unusable because of a storm drain, so it does end up just taking up one parking spot.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Director Knopki?
Yes, Mayor.
Is the Gold Bar on one spot?
I will have to double-check that. The original parking, parklet requirements require a two-spot just because of the, typically for the space that a parklet is needed. So I'd have to double-check that if they're only sitting on one spot.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? And, of course, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'm a little troubled just because I don't see the equity. If they're on one spot and they're charging twenty-five hundred and the other people on four spots charging twenty-five hundred, I'm a little confused by that. So I want to recommend tabling this item until we can get some answers as to...
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible to consider moving the resolution of intention, removing the parklet fee so that we can get everything else passed?
Yeah.
And hold that?
Yeah, that's...
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Yeah. Yes, go ahead, Manager Burton.
Mayor, one other option for consideration by the commission is that this is a resolution of intention, and it will be coming back for your consideration at a future date.
Okay, and that could also bring the clarification we're looking for? Okay, thank you. So do we have any other public comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just to clarify, I don't need to mention the parklet fee being reconsidered at this time? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution of intention to set fees charged by the Helena Transportation System and set a public hearing for August seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, oh, sorry. I would just add that as we are reconsidering the one space versus four, it is parallel versus angled. There it is. So I think just because someone is located on a site that has parallel versus angled, I'm not sure it should, that's not necessarily their fault. So when we are reconsidering the fees, I'd like to see if we can come up with a solution that works for everybody and isn't dependent upon what parking happens to be outside their building. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I also too, I'm also like to talk more about, or at least reconsider, the capital transit fee that went from eighty cents up to three dollars a ride. I think that's something I think we need to take a look at as well. I think that's a two-hundred-and-seventy-five percent increase. I think as we move forward, I'd like to look at the numbers and the options for pricing on rides for individuals who ride on capital transit. I think that's a pretty significant increase. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just really briefly, and I think Chris Cooley or David Knopki knows the answer. When was the last time we increased the rider fees? I know that we have to go to a dollar because the state reporting system only reports on the dollar, but I can't recall.
So Mayor and Commissioners, the last time the transit fee was increased was somewhere in the nineties. And yes, you're correct about the dollar. Our state reporting doesn't recognize below a dollar.
Okay, thank you.
So that's about minimum of twenty years. Any final comments from the commission? It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to specify the assess... Let me make sure that's where we are, okay? Consider a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the collection and disposal of residential garbage and refuse for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and levy and assess all properties receiving residential solid waste collection. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So before you have your resolution of intention to set the rate for the residential solid waste assessment, this particular assessment is, comes before the commission every year and must be set by August thirtieth of every year in order to get the information to the county and then on to their property tax assessments. This assessment covers the residential solid waste management system, which composes of the costly weekly waste collection that the city does, disposal costs for tipping fees at the Lewis and Clark County landfill, recycling facilities, including the satellite collection sites. It subsidizes the curbside recycling program and allows also for the citizens to bring three thousand pounds of self-haul to the transportation. The assessment is being proposed to go up eighteen dollars annually. In your packet, you'll see that this particular assessment hasn't been increased for many years. And since before twenty-fifteen, did it actually go up? The solid waste system is looking to have to buy new equipment. And so there is in the annual budget an intercap loan for approximately one-point-five million dollars in order to purchase equipment. Over the years, since the recycling program has come and also the management and inflation of regular maintenance to the program as far as, you know, personal costs, supplies, equipment, et cetera, the cash has, you know, slowly been depleted out of the fund. The recycling program, over the course of, since twenty-sixteen, has depleted cash reserves of about six-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars for that subsidy program. Currently, the city pays eight dollars and twenty cents for the curbside recycling, and the customer pays eight dollars. There's currently about fifteen hundred customers on the program. And due to the need for equipment purchases and the depletion of the cash flow, the Public Works Department is asking for the eighteen-dollar increase in the annual fee for the residential solid waste program. And if you have any other questions about that, I'm here to answer them. And I believe also Director Leland, he's way in the back, is here to answer any of your questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I think, I don't know if this question is for Director Danielson or Director Leland. Do you expect that we, we obviously are in the process of going through the solid waste master plan that will consider new rates and a new regime of how we, you know, decide how residential solid waste works? Do we expect that the rates to be reconsidered next year based on that master plan or in two fiscal years?
I'm going to have to defer to Director Leland to answer that question for you.
Mayor, Commissioner, we will reevaluate it based on our current system as it is right now next year, because we have to look at it every year and we just want to see with the inflation, what we're doing with energy costs that are going up, fuel costs that are going up, and just see where we are. So we'll just look at our system it is right now, and then the master plan will be looking at least two years down the road. We'll just get the recommendations next year, so we won't be able to really implement anything to assess any of this stuff at this time. So we'll just be getting into the recommendations and finalizing that up by this time next year.
And then, Mr. Mayor, if I could just, my other question was, when we do, when we do the RFP for the, or the contract, I guess, for the curbside recycling, what's the renewal timing on that?
Mayor, Commissioner, right now we have a two-year extension because we just renewed it and we were ju, and one more city option, so we could do three years on it. And we just wanted to time it up with the master plan. And the timing that it's going, it looks like it'll time up pretty well. So we will be able to reassess what we want to do for recycling. How are we going to handle it? And is it universal? Is it mandatory? Those options will be, will come to light with the master plan. We'll be able to do it and then either change or phase out the RFQ for the current curbside recycling.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no comment online.
I'll entertain a motion. Tired?
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the collection and disposal of residential garbage and refuse for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and levy and assess all properties receiving residential solid waste collection and set a public hearing date for August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Excuse me. Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to levy and assess properties to recover the amortized loan issues under the Residential Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy Loan Program for the tax year twenty-twenty-three. Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. This resolution of intention is for allowing us to set property tax assessments to recover the cost of loans taken out on behalf of the resident to the city for those that apply for and then also are able to move forward with most likely the solar panel programs, but it is for other energy-efficient loans as well. But in the last year, we had six property owners that were able to obtain a loan from the city. These are zero percent loans and they last for ten years. We started the loan program in twenty-fifteen. And currently, right now, the city has thirty-eight outstanding loans. And the outstanding loan balance is about two-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-two dollars. And so next year in our budget, we have about seventy-two thousand that's set aside for folks to be able to apply for the loan program in this next year. And I think that it's already been queued up and they've received several applications, so it's a very popular program. And with that, I can answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Any online, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will...
Go ahead, Commissioners.
I'm taking this one. Move to approve a resolution of intention to levy and assess properties to recover the amortized loans issued under the Residential Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy Loan Program for the tax year twenty-twenty-three and to set a public hearing for August twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to levy and assess properties to recover the cost of reimbursement for water and wastewater infrastructure installed by the city for tax year twenty-twenty-three. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. This resolution before, a resolution of intention before you is for the infrastructure cost reimbursement program. We currently have nine loans outstanding. The last loan that we did issue under this particular program was in September of twenty-twenty. We currently have a hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars of outstanding loans for this program. And right now, there are nine individual tax parcels that are currently paying the city through their annual property tax assessments. And these were zero percent loans for twenty years. I'm happy to answer any questions on this if you have any.
Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
I do not have any online, Mr. Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution of intention to levy and assess properties to recover the cost of reimbursement for water and wastewater infrastructure installed by the city for tax year twenty-twenty-three and set a public hearing date for August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan. Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the landfill monitoring and maintenance district for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and levy and assess all properties within the district. Director Danielson?
And thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. This is our landfill district assessment. This is for preserving and maintaining the district to prevent groundwater contamination in the city. It's also necessary to raise this assessment so that we can comply with state and federal statutes for groundwater contamination mitigation. Currently, the budget for this is right around a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars a year. And so we set the rate just according to recovering the cost of operating the district for residential properties, that's seven dollars and twenty-three cents. And for commercial properties, it's a varying amount. But for less than ten thousand square feet, they pay eighteen dollars and eight cents. From ten thousand one to fifty thousand square feet, they pay forty-two dollars and forty cents. From fifty thousand one to one hundred thousand square feet, commercial properties pay seventy-two dollars and thirty-four cents. From a hundred thousand and one to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet, they pay a hundred-and-eight dollars and fifty cents. And for those commercial properties more than two-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet, they pay an assessment of a hundred-and-fifty dollars and seventy cents. At this time, the city is not proposing any rate increases to this assessment. I will note that this particular district is coming up for renewal as well. And the commission will be receiving more information about that renewal as we come forward here in the next month.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the landfill monitoring and maintenance district for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and levy and assess all property within the district and to set a public hearing date.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the open space maintenance district for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and levy and assess all properties within the district. Director Danielson?
And thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. This assessment is for our open space maintenance district. This particular district employs an open lands manager, assistant land manager, a maintenance worker, and several temp staff to maintain our many, many acres of open space and open lands, including Mount Helena. They do operate off of a lot of grant funding as well. The assessment is set just to try to recover the costs of the program. Currently, the base rate for those that are in the, those that are assessed the district is twenty dollars. And in addition, for properties over two-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-two square feet of impervious area, they also pay a point-zero-zero-eight-oh-one cents per square feet. There is no recommendation to increase the fee this year. And I believe that Director Smith is online. If you have any questions about any of the accomplishments or information that this district has for maintenance, he's online to answer those questions.
Thank you. Comments from the commission? Public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the... to specify the assessment option for the open space maintenance district, number one, for fiscal year 2024, and to levy and assess all properties within the district, and to set a public hearing date.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intentions to levy and assess properties to recover the cost of removal of snow and ice from sidewalk on the adjacent public right-of-way, and to set a public hearing date. You have the floor, Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So this, this cost recovery assessment goes on individuals' tax, tax bills if they've had snow or ice requests to have been removed from their property. It's a base $50 fine plus the cost of removal. Property owners are given notice at the time of that, and they have the option to pay and not have it on their tax bill. These particular parcels, there are eight parcels. There were 12 times, there was one parcel that had several incidents where we had to go out and remove snow and ice from their particular tax parcel, for total cost recovery on tax bills of $1,576.04. This, this was, this fee was established by ordinance number 3210 back in January, or, excuse me, June of 2015, and at the end of the fiscal year, if we haven't recovered any of the costs, the Transportation System Department gives me a list of those that they had invoiced, and the cost of what it costs to remove the snow and ice so that we can bring it before the commission and recover the cost on their tax bill. Thank you.
Comments or questions from the commission? Any public comments? Any online, Madam Clerk?
I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution of intention to levy and assess properties to recover the cost of removal of snow and ice from sidewalks on the adjacent public rights-of-way, and to set a public hearing date.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the stormwater utility service area for fiscal year 2024, and levy and assess all properties within the district. You have the floor, Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is our annual stormwater assessment. We bring it before the commission every year to set the rate. The rate is always based off the cost recovery of the stormwater program. It's for maintenance and capital improvements of stormwater in the city. For fiscal year 2024, we're not recommending any rate increases for stormwater. Currently, a residential property has a base rate of $46.16, and then they also pay in additional fee if it's over 2,222 square feet of .02524 cents per square foot. Commercial properties are, have a base fee of $71.81, and for those commercial properties over 2,222 square feet, they also pay an additional assessment of .03296 cents per square foot. And that is, I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission? Public comments? Any online?
I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the stormwater utility service area for fiscal year 2024, and levy and assess all property within the service, and to set a public hearing date for August 21st, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to levy assessments for improvement of sidewalks, curb, gutters, and alleys approaching in the city of Helena, Montana for tax year 2023. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is our annual assessment to assess owners that enter into an agreement with the city for sidewalk replacement and/or maintenance of their sidewalk. In the last program year, we entered into 14 new agreements with folks. The program is usually set over the last few years of about $150,000, and then it's a annual first-come, first-served in order to get into the program. It's a very popular program. It fills up fairly quickly. And this last construction year, we had 14 new agreements. It's a zero percent loan for 10 years. The total outstanding side lock loans that we currently have is close to about half a million dollars for this particular program. And these are set to go on their tax bill over the course of 10 years to reimburse the city for the cost of the program.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission? Public comments? Madam Clerk.
I have none online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Move to approve a resolution of intention to levy assessments for improvement of sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and alley approaches in the city of Helena, Montana for the tax year 2023, and to set a public hearing date.
Second. Move and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the special street lighting district for fiscal year 2024, and levy and assess all properties within the district. You have the floor, Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is our annual assessment option for the street lighting districts within the city of Helena. We have 54 lighting districts within the city of Helena. Each lighting district is a self-balancing set of accounts, and so annually, we do a calculation to establish, to make sure that they have enough of a cash reserve to pay for maintenance and to carry them into the next fiscal year before we receive our assessments, because we only see it typically only twice a year. It trickles in a little bit in between, but the twice-a-year tax payments is when we receive that. So we do maintain a, about a 50% cash reserve of the cost of paying for the districts. All of the lighting districts in total generate a little bit, right around $913,000 for the city, and that's about what it costs us to pay the electricity bills and maintenance costs, and then some overhead fees that are charged against the district as well. We, when, in looking at it, it depends on the particular district, because some have many lights, some have not so many lights, but on average, I looked at the increase of the assessment. It's about, on average, across 54 districts, about a 5% increase to the homeowners. And that's all I have at this time.
Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Director Danielson, in front of our house, we have an LED. I think it's an LED light. What is the cost savings of having an LED light versus the typical standard, traditional streetlight? If you don't know, that's fine. I was just curious.
Mayor and Commissioner Shertliff, I don't have that information. I can reach out to Northwestern Energy to ask them what the difference in the cost savings of LED. I know that when they started replacing streetlights with LED, they were advocating that the cost of electricity would go down. I'm only looking at the actual bills that I receive, and they've increased from the prior year. So even if it's in an LED district or not, it could be an impact. I could take a little bit deeper dive into that and see which of the districts have, are not quite all outfitted with LED versus those that are, and if that makes a difference. But I can certainly reach out to Northwestern Energy and get that information for you.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments from the commission? Any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the special street lighting districts for fiscal year 2024, and levy and assess all properties within the districts, and set a public hearing date.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the street maintenance improvement district, number one, for fiscal year 2024, and levy to assess and assess all property within the district. You have the floor, Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is our, again, our annual assessment for our street maintenance district. This pays for the maintenance and capital improvements of streets throughout the city. There is no proposed increase to the rate for street assessments this year. A vacant, or residential lot pays $206.16 annually. Mobile homes pay $82.46 annually. A commercial property with less than 6,000 square feet pays $360 annually. And commercial properties with 6,000 square feet or more, they pay 6 cents per square foot for a maximum of assessment of $60,000. And I know that Director Knopki is president. If you have any other questions about street maintenance, thank you.
Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments?
I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the street maintenance and improvements district, number one, for the fiscal year 2024, and levy and assess all property within the district, and to set a public hearing date.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Public hearings. Consider a resolution approving the tax abatement application from Matthew Culpo and Christine Tennis for the property located at 3 Washington Place in the city of Helena, Montana. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So at our, at the joint commission meeting on July 11th, 2023, I presented the packet, an application for a tax abatement from Matt Culpo and Christine Tennis for a property located at 3 Washington Place. They submitted an application to the city in February, in late February, and it qualifies for consideration of tax abatement under MCA 15241603 for the historic property tax abatement for new construction statute. The abatement application went to the Historic Preservation Office, and they reviewed it and had the applicant make a few changes, but then later recommended approval of the tax abatement application, and their board approved that on May 16th. The abatement is for the increase of taxable value above $250,000, and so it will be, the abatement would last for tax years 2023 through 2028. The Department of Revenue provides the calculation of what the abatement might be, and also, it impacts the, you know, impacts the cities, the county, and also the school district. I did give notice to the Helena School District of the application packet for them to provide any public comment. I hadn't heard anything back from them. I know that the county is also planning for their public hearing, I think, within the next week as well, for this tax abatement application. Total abated taxes over the five tax years, the Department of Revenue indicated that that would be an abatement of $3,000 and five, $3,005 to the city, should the commission decide to move forward with approval of the tax abatement application. It's for a duplex that'll be located on an, it's like two parcels on one, one area, and it's at 3 Washington Place, so it's a duplex that they're building, and then they're removing an old garage that was located in the area. And it was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Office, and it met the historic nature of the district, and so they approved it, and it's now before you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resol- resolution approving the tax abatement application of Matthew Culpo and Christine Tennis for the property located at 3 Washington Place in the city of Helena, Montana.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just, really briefly, I'm gonna be a no on this, not because I don't think this is a good project, but, you know, the point of tax abatements are really economic development tools, and tax abatements are some of the least effective of the economic development tools. I rarely support them, and on those grounds, I won't be supporting this tonight, but I would love, I think this is a great project, if it can be geared towards affordable housing. We do have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund with funds available, and I think that would be a more appropriate route rather than a tax abatement. So I wanted to give my reasoning for a no.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Consider, oh, we've done that, so consider a request for demolition permit to allow demolition of a contributing property located in the historic, Helena Historic District in R3 zoning district for a building located at 39 South Rodney, legally described as the north 10 of Lot 20 and Lot 21 and 22 and 73, Block 29, Helentown Site 1869 to the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. Oh, okay, we have the Historic Preservation Officer, Pam Matardo, you have the floor. Good evening. Is that on, ma'am?
No, it is.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I am the Heritage Tourism Council staff. My name is Pam Matardo, and I am the Heritage Preservation Officer for the city and county. I'm going to give a PowerPoint, so I'll just step over here. The house in question is located at 39 South Rodney. It was built in 1872 by Joshua and Martha Ricker, and it is a contributing property to the Helena Historic District, and the portion is the South Central District. Like I said, it's a contributing structure to the National Register-listed Helena Historic District. It was listed on the National Register in 1993 as an addendum to the 1972 Downtown Westside Historic District, and the property is therefore subject to Helena Demolition Review Ordinance. This is the home in question. It was a single-family house when it was first built. These are a couple of elevations, the west front and then the south elevation. There were some later additions that appeared. This is the north elevation, and this is the rear on the bottom. The applicant has agreed to salvage some of the historic materials that are located within the house, although the exterior of the house has suffered from, I guess, neglect for many, many years. And the interior was at one time a pretty, a pretty decent house. These are the, some of the doors and windows in the house, and these are examples of things that could be salvaged. A local nonprofit has offered to remove these items prior to demolition. Historical significance of the house, this is Joshua Ricker. He owned the IXL Mine, which was located between Park City and Unionville. In 1867, he built a 20-stamp mill to treat ore from the Willach Union Mine, and he became quite wealthy. In 1872, he and his wife Martha built 39 South Rodney. Here's a couple of photograph, a couple of what are called sandbar maps. They're fire insurance maps. You can see on the left, the house started off actually quite small, and then about doubled in size by 1888. And then hence, that explains all those additions that you saw in the photographs. This is located in the South Central neighborhood, and this is just taking a- and this is just taking a look at what the neighborhood looks like surrounding 39 South Rodney. So starting at this northeast corner of, you're looking northeast along South Rodney, this is, would be the corner of, this would be the southeast corner of Broadway and South Rodney. And you can see that there are duplexes. There's a, on the left-hand side, there's a French Second Empire home, and then there are a string of duplexes that lead up to the house in question. This is looking northeast along South Rodney. As you see, there are apartments, the May Butler Center, which was formerly Emerson School. All these buildings are contributing to the historic district. This is looking south along the west side of South Rodney. There are some quite old, older houses here, the oldest one being the Rosenbaum Apartment, a house, which is now an apartment. It was built in 1865, so just a year after the discovery of gold. This is the property directly across South Rodney. This was the site of the Walker Reinig House. It was built in 1884 and demolished in 1989. This is just some shots of what the house looked like prior to demolition. I just wanted to go over the fact that I took a look at the number of demolitions in non-contributing properties that have racked up over the past several years. You'll see that there have been seven demolitions. You can see that circle. I'm sorry, I don't have a pointer here. You can see the circle, a red circle where the 39 South Rodney is located, and you just see that there's, there have been quite a number of demolitions or changes to buildings that have rendered them what's called non-contributing, so they are no longer listed with the National Register. Just to, just to give pause about the impacts of demolition and drastic changes to the neighborhood. They can alter the appearance of the historic neighborhood, and this includes buildings that replace historic structures that are demolished, and this can chip away at the historic district's integrity and viability as well as benefits that the districts can confer to owners of historic properties, like Mr. Culpo, who applied for a tax abatement for Three Washington Place. The cost of rehabilitation versus new construction, these are costs, these are costs provided by the applicant, and you can see it was $1,885,587.47 less to rehabilitate the existing building compared to construction for four dwelling units. On the left, you see the originally proposed site plan. It was a single, a single building with four units lined up. They went on a east, on a west-east axis. This is the revised site plan on the right side. Again, you'll see the Rodney Street side, and they're a little bit more in keeping with the duplexes that I showed you in that earlier, the historic duplexes that I showed you in that earlier slide. So this was the original proposed single building, the front entrance and other elevations. Those are the garages in the rear. And these are the proposed duplexes here. I am, as a historic preservation officer, I would advise that this be revised further, and the Heritage Tourism Council did have some requests. We cannot impose conditions on people because that's not allowed by the ordinance, but members did request the applicant continue to work with the HBO to further revise, refine the revised plan to comply with the design guidelines that we have for Helena's historic neighborhoods. So the HTC held a public hearing on June 30th for the proposed historic demolition permit for 39 South Rodney. Thirteen people spoke in favor of the proposal. Included the applicant with eight people in person and four people via Zoom. Identified issues included safety with the existing vacant structure that wasn't maintained in the community need for housing. Applicant Seth O'Connell clarified the property contains 10,600 square feet. They were now looking to build two duplexes instead of that single building that I showed you earlier, and they amended the plan to create two, they may amend the plan to create, plat, to create two lots. The members discussed the appearance of the building, the proposed new single structure compared to constructing duplexes, similar appearance to others. They were unclear as to what the new proposed construction would be, and they wanted assurance that the new construction would fit in the neighborhood and the historic district, and the applicant agreed to revise the proposed drawings in accordance with the HTC's discussion. The HTC continued the public hearing to June 29th, 2023. In that hearing, the applicant said he would, he would agree to salvage historic parts. And let's see, then he also changed it to be two duplexes instead of one. And then the HTC discussed the upstairs windows, the transoms, the doors, and the balconies on the west side of the proposed duplexes, and said they wanted to protect the historic neighborhood and the, and the district by revising those elements on the front of the building. It was my opinion that the transoms disrupted the building's rhythm and the neighborhoods and made the design busy, especially with the downstairs porches and balconies. This case is an example of trying to reconcile two community goals, historic preservation and housing, which can be accomplished together. However, the applicant has still not provided documentation regarding the building's structural integrity, which makes it difficult for the HBO to recommend approval for the historic demolition permit. The original proposed design did not, was not compatible with the design guidelines. The revised design is more compatible, but has not quite yet reached what I would consider to be a compatible design. The original, like I said, the original proposed design did not preserve, protect historical and archaeological heritage of Helena. This is language from the ordinance. While the revised, revised proposed design with two duplexes is better, but still needs some improvement to be consistent with this section. And thank you very much. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you. Come in some questions from the Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Ms. Matardo, for your presentation. I guess my first question is, since there isn't the engineering report, I mean, I'm a little bit, I'm curious because it feels like this might be almost a, like demolition through neglect, which is not necessarily the purpose of, of this ordinance. And so I guess I struggle with, you know, what, what ability do we have? And this also might be a question for the city attorney. What ability do we have to ensure that, you know, we are living up to, to the ordinance and, and not having demolitions just because the properties have been neglected for years and years, while also ensuring that we're complying with the design standards so we don't put our historic district designation at risk?
Well, one of the things that is troublesome in this situation is that our, our ordinance has a number of flaws and, and vagueness that makes it very hard for me and the Heritage Tourism Council to protect historic districts. There is no demolition by neglect provision in the ordinance. It also does not require that a plan be produced, and yet it asks a question that makes it impossible for one to answer unless you have a plan. So there are many parts to this ordinance that really, really need to be overhauled and, and, you know, almost entirely rewritten.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do you have any public comments? Please, come on. Thank you, Officer Matardo.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Seth O'Connell. I am the applicant. Yeah, we tried to work with them as closely as we possibly could as far as finding middle ground between what the ordinance does say. And so a little background, I wasn't aware that it was a contributing property. I now realize why nothing happened with it for a decade. You know, people are kind of steering clear of it, but I live right next door to the house, so I feel like the integrity of the neighborhood is very important to me. I've lived next door to it for about 10 years. We did have to go through some rendering. Since then, we've continued to work with it. Now that the council did approve the demolition, we did go meet with Mosaic. We're gonna continue to do that. The transom windows were the biggest thing, and then the coloring, making sure the two buildings were different color just to kind of keep that duplex. We did try to design the buildings with the same footprint as all the surrounding duplexes nearby. We're donating the garage. We're gonna try to donate as much of the historical, the doors and the hinges and the doorknobs and stuff as we possibly can. But at the same time, we were trying to, you know, talk with potential buyers. We're looking to build townhouses. I might want to live in one of those. And we were looking at, you know, what do people want? Because we're not asking for tax abatements. We're not trying to do a historical rebuild. So we tried to find middle ground where, hey, these, these fit within the historical neighborhood, but it's also not me that let the property dilapitate. I've owned the property since November. So we, we've tried our best to, to work with it, and I think this design works well. As far as the transom windows, it's been difficult because of the, the height of the building, with it being two stories, to have that much height. The more we looked at the designs, it's like, it, it, it looks naked almost on the top of, of the facade when you, when you don't have any other windows. So we did bring them down a little bit, and we've made a couple other changes and continue to do that, working with the cities, various departments, which have been very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. O'Connell.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. O'Connell, just a question, and I believe you alluded to it, but there was a slide that showed the cost of rehabilitation versus the cost of demolition. Can you explain why you chose demolition versus the seemingly less expensive rehabilitation?
Yeah, so, so we're looking at four units, rather. So when you look at it actually on a unit basis, it is cheaper to do it. The builder, the contractor that I've hired, actually, that's what he does, is typically remodels more than new builds. He actually just finished one right up here on the corner of Howie, for North Howie. He's working on another one on Butte Avenue. So when I brought him in, he was like, what, what do, you know, what are we trying to do here? This, this project's gone very, very far beyond a typical remodel, a rehab, especially with the various additions that have been added on to it and, and some of the other materials. So then we looked at the next product, and again, I wasn't even aware of any of that. I was watching what was going on with the Hedges Building. I was like, wow. I'm glad I'm not a historical property, and then people are like, no, you are. And I was like, you know, so. Yeah, we, we did originally look at it as a, as a remodel.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comments?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the Commission, my name is Chris Avril. I'm the Chair of the Heritage Tourism Council. Want to thank Officer Matardo for speaking to the property. And I also want to thank the applicant for working with us diligently to make the changes that we thought would best fit the historic district based on the expertise of the board members and the advice of the city staff. Just a quick history here. I was before you last in the fall regarding the Hedges House. I believe we had a different situation there, so I do want to speak to the reason that we recommended approval of the demolition permit, and that specifically is some of the public input that we received at the hearing and via email leading up to and following the hearing. It was very different than the Hedges House. The Hedges House was universally opposed to demolition, save a voice or two, and this was universal support because of the eyesore that this property has become, combined with the effort of the applicant to, to do something in a short time that he's owned the property. I'd also suggest that we held the hearing, I believe, on the 20th. We could not find a resolution there, so we had a continuation of the public hearing till the week after. I think both sides agreed. We didn't want to be a delay here. We didn't, we would, would not want to burden the applicant further. And so we quickly had them make some revisions to the design that they proposed. We reviewed it the next week at a continuation of the public hearing. That's when we offered our approval with a subsequent motion from members of the, of the council, asking them to work with city staff to continue to refine that to meet the, the historic guidelines for the district. We're not quite there, but I believe that, you know, I know that your, your task is to approve or deny. There's no conditional approval or conditional denial. I believe that it's in the best interest of the city to approve and request them to continue to work with city staff as they indicated they would, to make additional changes that fully fit the historic guidelines. And I'd just like to, to note, just this year, the State Historic Preservation Office was able to release a, a new five-year preservation plan. Couple of the items in there are, two of the issues that were identified by the public. One of them is lack of public awareness and understanding, and I think we heard that clearly from the applicant. That's something I believe that Officer Matardo referred to with revisions to the demolition ordinance. That's something that our council is looking at, working with city and county staff, to make sure that we're able to produce a fairer, clearer demolition ordinance that really sets out expectations for all sides equally and, and, and makes revisions that makes Pam's job easier. And secondly, one of the issues that's raised in the, in the preservation report is asking the question, what is important in Montana and what is worthy of our preservation? And I think that people are starting to become more active. We're starting to more, see more people at our, at our council meetings, and we're an advisory board, so it's, it's important to understand that we're only members of the public as well. But to have even more members of the public involved, I think, regardless of how frustrating this process can be, is a, is a good thing. So I feel like we're moving in the right direction. We're getting somewhere with historic preservation in the city, and I appreciate the work you'll do tonight to, to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comments on this topic? I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Maybe for the city attorney or the clerk. Just trying to find a motion unless one of my colleagues would happen to have the motion, the appropriate motion. Go ahead, Commissioner Reed, actually. You've got it there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Logan. I will move approval of a demolition permit for contributing property located in the Helena Historic District in R3 zoning district for a building located at 39 South Rodney, legally described as the north ten of Lot 20 and Lots 21 and 22 and 73, Lot 29, Helen Town Site 1869 to the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, per Chapter 15, Title III of City Code, City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Sherliffe.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission on anything? I'm afraid to say anything.
Hello. Me and my friend here. I'm Juno.
I'm Isaiah Stevenson.
Uh, we're here to try to convince you guys to get lights above.
Would you give your address, please?
Oh, yeah. My address is 415 Last Chance Gulch, Unit 32.
301 West Lauren Street, apartment number 301.
Thank you.
All right, so we're here to try to convince you guys to basically get lights above the skate park. We're both very avid skaters in the Helena area. We're a big part of the skating community. And recently, we've started realizing that we've had some issues with the skate park. It's perfect during the day. We love it. We have plenty of children and young adults that are finding a community in this tiny little skate park. And it's hardly anything, and we can make so much fun out of it. And that's what's so amazing about the skate park is we're able to really just create our own community and be happy with each other and have fun, and that's what it's all about. Getting lights above the skate park wouldn't only increase the amount of time we could all skate and have fun. We also have some very valid reasons and concerns as to why we should get lights at the skate park. as to why we should get lights at the skate park. Reason number one being is that lights would help people who work during the day to be able to skate later and access the park later. This would not only encourage our local people to be able to go and work harder because they're more encouraged to go and play hard so that they can go and work hard. But this would also give us an opportunity to go and socialize with the people that have also been working all day and serving our town. Two is that lights will benefit local skaters. Let's see. In the sense that we're going to become more active and our community can almost become upgraded. The skate park will appear updated and fresh. So if people see the park at night, there'd be so many more skaters encouraged to come visit Helena and come skate the lit park. This can lead to skate jams and skate, I guess, competitions in the local area and lead to a stronger skate community. Benefits Helena, economy-wise, local skate shops. We'd have business at the restaurants, even Airbnbs from out of town. Lights would keep crime and mischief at a lower level because patrolling officers around in the area would be able to see and protect our teenage and children population against drugs and fights. This has become a huge issue recently, especially in the past years, and it's only gotten worse. If we got lights, it would seriously help. And cops would be able to better help and like, protect our kids instead of have these fights go down in a very lack of, of like, a controlling environment, basically. And in the end, this would just benefit the town altogether and the children and the young adults because in the end, we're all just trying to find community and we're trying to grow and have fun. And this would all make us healthier. It'd grow the skate community in Helena. The more the merrier. It's not only for the passionate skaters. This is for fun childhoods and the better help our hard workers in Helena. Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you got, buddy?
I think that putting lights at the skate park is going to be a huge benefit against the criminal activity that is kind of happening there most of the time. We have a great community that is always there with, like Juno said, the kids and the people that are there to use the skate park as it is to be intended to be used. But we do have a problem with people coming to the skate park to not use the skate park, instead use it as an area to cause mischief and rowdiness. In the last couple of weeks, I've seen numerous fights over ridiculous reasons that there's no reason for the skate park to be the place to go fight and go consume alcohol and do all that jazz. I think if we have lights, it's going to stop 90% of that. I was there last night and it was very rowdy. There ended up probably two cops that drove by 10 times in the last hour. And then for the last two hours, I was there from 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock. Just two cops sat there with their lights on, their spotlights, and watched the skaters because they had to because of the mischief that's been happening. They sat there for two hours with their spotlights. They looked through my car, everyone's cars, just with their flashlights, trying to stop the mischief which was happening. I think the lights could prevent so much of that from happening.
Make things easier and also have something to add in as well.
Go ahead.
Here, you go back, you go back. I got to think for a second.
Oh, yeah, you got to wrap up now.
All right, we're good, we're good. I think we have everything.
I think that's it. I just want to say thank you so much for giving us your time to talk today and for listening to us. Thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioner.
Hold on. Any comments or questions for these?
I guess I would be interested in finding out from staff how we might be able to start investigating, how we can maybe solve, resolve some of these issues. And if we can have staff get in touch with you all to maybe find out what might be the best steps forward and what's feasible. But very grateful that you've brought this concern to us.
Yes, another thing was that we didn't only want to have our focus remain on preventing mischief and also drawing crowds for, you know, skate jams and upping the economy. We also really wanted to point out the fact that we have very, very loyal skaters in the Helena area. And we've all been very passionate about skating this park. We love it. And the more the lights on, the more we can skate. And this is what it's all about. We're trying to push this so we can skate more. So, yeah, thank you guys so much. I appreciate it.
Any other, hold on.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
In addition to Commissioner Dean's comments, I'd be interested particularly in investigating solar options for the park. And I would welcome input from the skate community on how best to light it and what some options might be. I think it's a great idea, and thanks for coming down.
Thank you for your guys' time. Thank you so much.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you both for being here. And thanks for bringing this to our attention. We spent a lot of time down in that park, whether it's walking around, playing with our dogs, going to the dog park. I think there's got to be some options. I, I really like the idea of solar lights or plugging solar into existing, existing power that's down there. I think, I, I've brought it up before as adding the lights to our dog park for safety because it is along the railroad, et cetera. But also too, I have seen some of the activity and you, you, down in your area. But it's fun to hear and see kids of all ages enjoying the skate park. So thanks for bringing this idea to us. Thanks.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
And, yeah, would you leave your contact? I mean, if you have an organization, leave your contact information before you leave. And go ahead, Commissioner. I mean, Manager Burton?
Mayor, I was just going to ask if we could make the same request.
I read your mind. Leave your contact information before you go. But are there opportunities for people my age to skate?
Yeah, yeah.
You got beginners classes and all that kind of stuff?
All the time.
Yeah, we've actually seen a huge increase in not only young adults and young children coming over to the skate park to want to learn, but skating in general has become more popular because of social media. And we're getting a lot of adults that used to skate that are coming back and older people that are coming back to come skate. And so this would add to it as well. It's, it would only be more fun, so.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you for your time.
You bet.
Do we have any others for public comments?
Hello, I don't know how this works, but my name's Rad Monti. I'm a chronic alcoholic. Today, I've been sober 3,122 days. The reason I'm here is because I've started a ragtag camp of gulch. I have all kinds up there. I've got mentally ill. I've got veterans. I got addicts and I got drunks. We made the paper, and we made the news, and we made two moves. There's a lot of haters out there that want us out. We don't have nowhere to go. The paper said that we're there for necessity. Fact of the matter is, we are there for necessity. There are agencies in this town that are getting money to help people. Now, I don't know what happens with money. I'm not making any wild, I don't care where the money went. But there's people out here that have a need. And I've been watching back for the last year, and people have talked about it, and they've listed, and they've asked for input, and nothing has been done. There's an agency downtown called God's Love. And I've been 86 there quite a few times over the years. I'm a chronic alcoholic. I fought, and I was a jerk, and I deserved to be kicked out of there. But they never denied me a meal. They never denied me dignity. They never denied me respect. As an alcoholic and addict, most of us are at the bottom of our pit. Some of us dumb enough, we go, we're in a backhoe and we dig some more. We have a problem with confidence. And it's not like we're a bunch of strangers. I've been here 35 years. I raised my children here because this is a good town and there's good people here. We have an efficient law enforcement that are tremendous. And I would like to thank them. I would like to thank them. Now, I don't know what we're going to do about this, but I've tried to do something and I've seen. If, if I can do this with nothing, all I'm asking is that we start a dialogue and start doing something about this problem. And allow these people to get their dignity back and get their self-respect back and, and build their competence so they can get on with their lives. Now, I've had some success stories. I got one guy that's got mental illness. He put in, got on the housing list, and he got a place at The Guardian. I got another guy that's been up there for two months. You might know him because Voodoo made the paper, his black cat. Smallest tent in camp, by the way. He got a job. He's been there two months. He got a job about a month ago at Safeway. He's remaining sober. And he's also been awarded or given housing at The Guardian as well. He's waiting for an opening, but he's next. I got some mentally ill up there. Somehow, they got crossed from the list when the paper was up there. I got mentally ill people up there that, I got one that the wearer's getting money, and he throws $100 at him every week just to get him under the carpet. He's a handful. I know that man. I knew him when he was in high school. He had dreams. He had aspirations. And a tragic accident took that all the way from him. Now, he belongs in a group home. And he smokes marijuana. And he completely gets kicked out every time. Well, in the process, he's been out there on the streets, and now he's hooked on meth. I have him up at camp, and he's doing wonderful, smoking marijuana. Some people like me and him. That's the only benefit there is. I'm a chronic alcoholic. I'm a typical alcoholic that usually dies of this disease. I've been drinking since I was eight years old. I've had numerous DUIs. And it's destroyed my life, just as it's destroying these other lives. And we're not a bunch of strangers that rolled into town on some caravan or whatever. We're your neighbors. We're the ones that are in the pulpit with, with, with you and your churches. We're, we're behind you at Walmart. We're, we're on the side of the road when you're driving by. And we're forgotten. I'm here to rattle some cages. I want to get some people's attention because these are good people. And I know what everybody sees on the news in homeless encampments. I challenge you all to come to my encampment. It's a sobriety camp. I want to introduce all of my people and get their stories out because there's a story behind each and every one of those faces. And the fact of the matter is, you guys are one paycheck away from being the same boat as us. The economy's not doing good. And throwing money at this problem is making it worse. That Mira program, I couldn't get a place because of my past and because I have a dog. Now, I can't help but the past. And I will make their argument, yep, I was a jerk. But I don't have to be a jerk forever, and I don't have to have a drink. And there's other people like that, too. We just want our dignity. We want to be able to sleep at night and be able to make an appointment without getting kicked and roused in the middle of the night. And now we're walking around for three hours looking for someplace to sleep. And then we got to take a shower. And now we're so tired, we can't even make our appointment at night. And then you're worried about losing everything. I started a camp where people's got their stuff up there, and they come to town and do their business, and then go back home, and they, their stuff is safe. We keep a clean camp, and our main goal is to be good neighbors. And I've had tremendous support from the neighbors, let me tell you. They have been awesome. That's what this town is about. That's what Montana is about. This ain't San Francisco. This ain't Portland, Oregon. This ain't Chicago. This is Helena, Montana. My people take pride in those mountains up there. And there's something about that Aspen Grove that can give you back a renewed spirit and life and a willing, willingness to, to live. I went up there to die. Didn't have the balls to shoot myself. I thought I could drink myself to death. That Aspen Grove saved me. And I guess, I don't know what I'm asking for, but I just want you guys to all come up to my camp, meet the people, check it out before all the hate talk and everything else comes on. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, sir. I will take you up on your challenge and visit with you tomorrow at your camp.
God bless you. Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Mayor, if I might also, I just thank you, Rad, for coming down. I, I did get the chance to come up and meet some of the people. I'd encourage you all to do the same. It is, as described, it is a beautiful, well-kept place. I appreciate everything you're doing, and I also look forward to continuing conversations with you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments?
Mayor, Commissioners, Teresa Ortega, Good Samaritan Ministers, but also a private citizen of Helena. I just want to say a couple of things. When we talk about peer support, this is the epitome of peer support. He is not making up stories when he says he has people up there that couldn't get what they needed, but the grouping around them supported them to get to their meetings. Their PO officers are coming up there to meet with them because it's a safe, stable place for them. There are people that are there just to get a job and have a place to stay before they move on. So I ask that you please, please consider some kind of,